Mr. Chairman, point of order before you begin.
Go ahead.
The pre-town meeting is when we end up discussing the annual town meeting warrant.
We live on TCTV8 and YouTube.
You end up, you have other agenda items on. We've addressed this in the past by opening the pre-town meeting and closing the pre-town meeting to address that. So if you would like, I would make the motion to open pre-town meeting once you've done the pledge of allegiance.
Yeah, we can do that. That's not an issue. Okay, for offset, I'd like to call the meeting order. Start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to open pre-town meeting to discuss the annual town meeting warrant for 2021.
Second. Okay, motions remain seconded. Go around, Bev?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, as we had talked about, Adam's going to be screen sharing the annual town meeting warrant. So save a little bit of reading on my part tonight.
This is a point, Mr. Chairman. The final approval rendition of this was done by the selectmen on 4/8/2020, and I'm making that known now because I got things that I want to address because of that date.
Absolutely. Okay, Article One. Fiscal year 21 operating budget amendment. They don't have articles listed there on the screen. So have any comments, questions, concerns on Article One? What we'll be doing is we going through and we'll be voting on the recommendation on the warrant articles as presented to us in front of us here.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Sure, go ahead.
This is Will Spring. This basically, I'm talking concerning with the snow and ice. I know it can be deficit spending. I have a couple of things that I have as far as questions, which didn't get picked up when you sent the questions to our administrator. The BVA, which was issued on 4/20/20, shows the, what you might call it, deficit as $74,864.70. That's totally different than the $90,000. And I think the question that I asked was if, since there was, this was, the warrant was done and not changed after the snowstorm, whether or not the funds for the snowstorm that happened, once the warrant was done, if that was going to be as a substitute motion? Or was that going to be addressed by coming to the advisory with emergency reserve request?
Probably for Adam to try to answer that. I would figure some of it would be for the purchase of salt and that, which they probably at that point wouldn't have purchased any additional, but I will defer to town administrator for his input on that.
So what we usually do is when I finalize putting together this warrant, I will sit down and look through the accounts. On this particular account, I spoke with our DPW director, Mr. Sozik, who felt comfortable with the $90,000 people to clear and address any kind of potential shortfall in funds to get through the end of the fiscal year on this particular account. Now, let's say for whatever reason, we go in excess of that, I do anticipate, and I didn't mention to Mr. Sozik, that we would go in front of the advisory committee to seek funds for whatever that difference might be. Fortunately for this last storm we had, what was it, April 16th off the top of my head, it was very low in the sense of funds that were expended. So we do feel comfortable, the $90,000 should be sufficient. However, if there is need, we would definitely exploit that opportunity.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, Will Spring again. I have a couple of other things that, I did some research. As you know, I end up delving quite a bit since we ended up looking at this on the 15th, basically an overview of that. I did some research since then, and what I ended up seeing is that the DOR basically said on number six is the limited use of free cash, which was on page 15. And they also had a recommendation on there that we should end up trying to take and end up increasing over a five-year period or some level of time to 2,000, 2,000, 203,642. Well, in looking at the budget book on page 134, the last five years is the FY21, the FY21 budget shows 147,500 with a five-year phase-in of $14,418. That being said, what did the town put forward in their budget? They didn't address what the DOR brought. They brought it out as, they brought it up $1, and there's extra money in this budget that that $14,000 should not have been had. Very difficult. I want to bring those up so people understand we are watching what's happening. Now, as far as this particular article, I end up, I'll make the motion to accept the article with a recommendation of a yes vote, but I want them folks to know that we're watching other things that are happening, and this other issue as far as the only the $1 up will be addressed when we come to the budget. So I'll make that motion on Article One to have a yes vote.
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, if I might. Anybody have questions or comments? Mr. May, go ahead.
Yes, I had a question comment relating to the other item in this article, which is the litigation collective bargaining for $15,000 in the select board, because I too have looked at the BVA that came out, 33121, and out of the 72,500 appropriated for the year, there seems to still be $31,795 in that account. And I'm wondering, you know, why the collective bargaining wouldn't have been part of the budget from last year, knowing that they were coming due to begin with, but why this extra money is needed with seemingly excess funds in that purchase of services account? And that's it.
Adam, if you could address that?
Oh, the number you're talking about, Mr. May, is we're at about 31, 36,000, I believe, the number you mentioned.
It's roughly 31, yeah, 32.
31,000, okay. And what happened was some of these bills were catching up with, they're a little further back than I would have liked. I spoke with town council, I could have done those in sooner. And quite frankly, I think this will be a tight account, and that should be sufficient. Now, the collective bargaining itself is one of those things where you never know how much you're really going to use, depends on how everything goes in negotiations. To be on the safe side, I chose to go this nothing.
Okay, so if I'm not mistaken, this is Bob May again. Just so I can be clear for myself here, basically you're saying that we have bills that are catching up, bills, you know, that are catching up that haven't been paid yet that will change that ratio and, let's say, require the use of this extra money?
Correct, and it will be tight.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I had a question, you bring up a good point. Mr. May, I didn't have a chance to look at that particular item. Why are we having these bills? Why aren't they coming in on a timely basis? Can you answer that, Adam, please? If you could, I mean, oh.
It's a matter of staying on top of the town council, making sure you get the bills in on time and to go through all of them. It does take, and something that we need to work on.
So it's not an issue with, within our financial department?
No, no. Not amongst internally, it's an issue of when we get the bills and to go through them and then processing them. So I usually go through and we'll see what can be applied to a special article if it's related to that or whatever it might be, and making sure that they get processed properly.
Okay, does anyone have anything else on Article One?
That's about as clear as mud.
I think what he said, I think he said that from when they put the, from the BVA, when it came out, they have bills that are continuing coming in, and some are rather old, and they've got to work with the town council, their office, to get the bills in in a timely manner. I think that's what he said.
That's correct.
Is there an issue, Will Spring, is there an issue with town council as to they're on a billing, billing us? Do we, have we seen this issue before? What's, why are they, do we know why they are not coming forth with the bills on a more timely basis? Since, I mean, they know we end up having issues within the finance department that we have to process these fairly quickly. So I mean, that's, that's my question.
It's a matter of staying on top of and getting the bills in.
I would say that's out of scope for this meeting.
Does anyone have anything else on Article One? We've got a motion made and seconded. Okay, roll call vote, Bev?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, Article Two. Consent agenda, see if the town vote to approve a consent agenda consisting of the following actions. Now listed here before us, report to town offices, reports to town committees, set annual spending limits on the revolving accounts as listed below, accepting transportation network community fee assessment. Does anyone have any comments, questions on Article Two?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Will Spring again.
Yes, go ahead.
I looked throughout the BVA that we just got, and I saw no revolving fund called burial and improvement fund as a revolving account. So I think this, this is an error, and I think that that needs to be addressed.
That is the cemeteries, was also known as the cemetery revolving fund.
May I make a comment, Mr. Chairman, Will Spring again? In the BVA, it does, there is a cemetery revolving account. To take and end up putting this in this way here is misleading to the members of the community that we have something else other than cemetery.
It should have been called cemetery.
It should have been.
Does anyone have anything else on Article Two? I'd like to take a motion on Article Two.
Make a motion to accept Article Two as written. Unless, well, let me rephrase that. I make a motion to accept Article Two as written unless they can change burial and improvement fund to cemetery fund to make it correct with the actual fund that it is. Adam, can you do that for the warrant?
I would have to do that in a motion.
Motion by select board?
Correct.
All right, well.
Because I can't change the warrant at this point.
Is it, that is just how it's labeled in the system? Because the community doesn't, it's not a, something that's usually the budget versus actual, is it just how the label is? I know I've got accounts that are labeled a little different in accounting, but it's still the one account. Is, is that the situation on this, Adam?
That's how I understand it.
I was going to say the cemetery revolving is code 26060, and it's a cemetery revolving expense, you know, account 266000, blah, 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 blah. So, you know, that does seem to have some specificity. And the concern I would have, and I appreciate your question on that, Will, is the, you know, burial and improvement fund just doesn't put it anywhere. There's no place to actually put that.
So, so I would make a motion to accept Article Two as written, and that town meeting and explanation be given by either the Board of Selectmen. I think the Board of Selectmen would be appropriate to explain that town meeting, that burial improvement fund is really the cemetery revolving fund, so people know what they're voting on.
And that would clarify the fact that it's as, you know, as Adam's about to present us, you know, later on with an increase for this year in the cemetery fund, that would show that next year it's going back to its normal level too. With a lot more clarity.
I mean, I don't think anyone was trying to mislead anything. I just think that they need to get it right.
Right, I just think it was a, you know, oversight.
Yep, and Debbie will just put that in our recommendation.
Yeah, I'm saying to recommend a yes vote, but with the understanding that at town meeting an explanation will be given about the names of the two accounts correcting it.
Yes.
Got it, I wrote it all down.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. Does anyone have any else, anything else on Article Two?
The only thing I question is, I haven't seen the town report, the annual town report. Is that complete this year, or are we going to have to do another addendum because there's missing the reports?
Is that for me, Bev, or the chair?
Go ahead, Deb.
The report's complete, yes, and. I'm sorry?
The complete audit in there?
It's the audit that's up to the latest. We still have to get the management letter complete in the exit conference, and that participating, the board to have that in front of them, May 26th, there has been a correspondence received by our office, and we're working on getting that in front of the select boards.
Well, is that going to be in the town report?
The audit, the latest numbers up to when that was released have to be in there, so we included those.
Are we saying that the audit is complete in the annual report?
And number, he's saying the numbers are correct up until in the annual report, up until what they have, they can't put in what hasn't happened, that the meeting hasn't happened yet. They wouldn't be able to put the total in, if I'm correct.
No, I understand that. My question is, are they saying that this is a completed, a completed audit in the annual report? I don't want to take and mislead people into thinking that the audit is complete when it is not.
The audit will be complete come when the board accepts it.
But it won't be, the completed audit will not be reflected in the town report.
Correct.
Does anyone have anything else on Article Two? Okay, do a roll call vote. Tony?
Yes.
Bev?
Yeah.
Will?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Article three, FY22 sewer department operating budget. They don't have questions or comments on Article Three listed before us.
And make a motion to accept Article Three as written.
I'll second that.
Okay, motions are made and seconded. Any further discussion on Article Three?
I believe the question that we had on Article Three was, was answered in the, by the administrator in his response to us.
Yes. Okay, no further questions to a roll call vote. Tony?
Yes.
Bev?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Bob? Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Article four, the sewer capital project. Capital project listed there before us. Does anyone have any questions, comments on Article Four?
Just, just one thing, and it's not necessarily about this article. We're making a notation on the Article Two to clarify that. Are we going to end up putting any other, as you, as we know, as we go through, do you anticipate putting any other ribbage on as far as our recommendations? We've done this in the past, that's why I'm asking, before we continue too far.
As far as in the voter, the handout, Deb's putting things down. As far as the notations and the recommendations, what we're voting on is the article as written, so we need to keep our votes on the accurate article because we don't want to, also, we don't want to mislead the people we may have recommendations, but those can be made on town floor if someone wishes to. The change in the article, we have to vote on, we should be voting on what's actually right here before us, because that's what was signed off by the board, and that's what will be presented and was posted accurately in the town warrant. So anything changing after that should be done on town floor as, by an individual, as far as that goes, Will, I believe. Does that answer your question?
No, because we could end up having a vote that's contrary to what the selectmen have presented, and we should end up giving some notation as to why we voted one way or the other.
Well, there may be those cases like we did last year, Will, but let's, let's get to the articles and, and figure that part out. Like Article Two, we said, yeah, we want them to annotate the fact that the burial and improvement fund is really the cemetery fund. If it's clarification like that, so the voters get what they need, then yes, we'll probably do that.
Correct, we just need to make sure that we vote on the actual article, that's the only key.
Yeah, I agree, and I just want to clarify, I was just looking for clarification going forth, going forth, forward here.
Okay, any questions or comments on Article Four, on the sewer capital project?
Make a motion to accept Article Four as written.
Second. Okay, motions are made and seconded. Any further comments? Okay.
Yes.
Bev?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Article Five, the FY22 cable department operating budget. Listed there before us is Article Five. Here any comments or questions on cable department operating budget?
I think we should completely eliminate it. No, I'm just kidding. Oh, geez. I just figured I'd get blackout on the screen or something.
Mickey Mouse under your name.
Yeah, no doubt.
I'll make a motion to approve Article Five, the cable department operating budget.
I'll second that.
Okay, motions are made and seconded. Any further comments, questions, concerns?
Yes, just this, that when we make our recommendation as a, under this, that we also note that our recommendation is based upon the fact that it has nothing to do with taxation and comes from their earnings.
Absolutely.
I say that in the article. From the certified retained earnings of the cable fund.
But it wouldn't hurt for us to take in, on ours, to take and end up saying that we, we recommend it based upon the fact that it's not coming from taxation and from their earnings.
Motion's are made and seconded.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Tony?
Yes.
Bev?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Bob? Yes.
Deb?
Yeah.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. If we go further, Deb, I forgot to ask, are you able to be monitoring the chat tonight?
Yes, so far it's quiet.
Okay, I decided, wanted to check, thanks.
Thank you. Told them all off last night.
But there's 11 people watching.
Oh, good.
So, of course, I wanted them, so.
Usually there's more watching on TV that just want to be informed too, so that works out good that way. Article Six, deposits to the general fund stabilization and OPEB accounts submitted as listed below. Questions, comments, concerns on Article Six?
Just wish they were higher.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Bob, Bob May here. I was just wondering if we still, since we still have the administrator on, if he could clarify what the total is for the year into these accounts, if he has that available?
I have the total amount that will be on, in the accounts.
But not, but not what was put in in the fall and what's put in now?
The fall town meeting, yeah, I don't have the fall town meeting warrant next to me, Bob.
Thank you, Adam, that's all right.
But this, but to Bob's point, this would be the second time, fall town meeting, we made some deposits. This time around, we made some deposits, we're looking at after these proposed transfers of having roughly 956,000 in the stabilization or the OPEX, if you will, reserve, 242,000 the capex reserve, and 227,000 the OPEB reserve after these, if these were to be approved by town meeting, and those are all the numbers, the overall numbers I, I have.
Thank you, Adam.
You're welcome.
That's just, Mr. Chairman, Will Spring here. I heard a comment by Mr. DeJoy about he wishes they were higher. Maybe as far as if we accept this particular article, it would, I think it would be appropriate to put in there that we recommend that the town look at increasing these also, but for this year, we are approving this amount.
I agree.
Okay, does anyone have anything else on Article Six?
Mr. Chairman, Bob May, I'll make a motion that we accept Article Six as written.
I have a second.
I'll second that.
Second.
Okay, motions are made and seconded. Any further comments or concerns?
The only comment I have, Mr. Chairman, is if we put in, now that we're going to recommend this, is to increase it in the forthcoming years to end up building up these accounts. And that's, that could, that's appropriate for us to do that.
Yep. Mr. Spring, if I might, and I don't disagree with you by any stretch, but the, if I'm not mistaken, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, in the financial management policy, I believe we just did an increase to go from a goal of 5% to 8%, and from 1% to 2% on a capex. So that very thing that you're talking about is in play. But I agree that we should put as much as we can in there. But I agree that we should put as much as we can in there.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. May.
Any further comments or concerns on article six? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Bev?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Deb?
Yeah.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Article seven, funding of the community preservation accounts. Numbers are listed here before us on the articles. Anyone have any questions, comments, concerns on article seven?
I'll make a motion to accept article eight, the Community Preservation Act, EES appropriation. Probably one of the biggest things we've done in a long time.
Hold it, we're on, we're on the article before that, Bev.
Oh, oh, what were you, where are you?
Or article seven.
Oh, seven, I thought we did that already.
Nope. The funding of the community preservation accounts.
Oh, I thought we voted on it. All right. Well, we'll do that one too. Article seven, funding of the community preservation accounts. Move to accept that.
I'll second.
Second.
Okay, motions are made and seconded. Any further questions, comments, concerns?
Just for those people that are looking, watching us, the town ends up assessing a three percent over a hundred thousand on your evaluations on your home. It's matched by the the state, so we we are one of the communities get that gets the top amount that's available to us.
Correct. Any further discussion on article seven? Okay, do a roll call vote. Bev?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Deb?
Yeah.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, Deb, it's article eight.
Okay, this is the one. This is a good one. This is going to help a lot of elderly people in town and people that live in the area that can't find a place to live they can afford. Article eight, Community Preservation Act, EES appropriation. I move that we accept this article.
I'll second.
Nope.
Motion's are made and seconded. Any comments, questions, concerns?
Just to address some concerns of people on Facebook, I don't know who's watching us. Most of the, most of this housing is going to be fifty-five and over, but because they're getting federal money, they end up having to take and end up having some subsidized low income housing as part of the project. I don't think that's detrimental. Some people were questioning whether there was enough parking space. That's, I think that's been addressed by the planning board per se, because they purchased the 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 house next door to it towards the fire, the fire station. Just for clarification, Mr. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, if I might.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Bob, Bob May here. Yeah, I just wanted to say that I watch this program, this process from the beginning to the end and and, you know, to this point, not the end. But and I've been impressed with it so far, and I think it'll be a positive for the community. And I just wanted to say thank you to Adam for the work that he's done with Matt on this, because I know he's been very involved in the process, and I think this will be good for the community.
It's going to be real good.
That's it, Bob. A lot of work went into this, and it's going to be a huge thing for the town.
One other positive thing on this, if I could, Mr. Chairman, Will Spring, is that this corporation is purchasing the Ballins Elementary School for, I believe, five hundred thousand, Adam?
That is correct.
And that will end up being, those funds will be available to the town, so that's a positive to take and end up helping us out.
Yes.
I agree. Yes, it is. Anyone have anything else on article eight? If not, do a roll call vote. Bev?
Yes.
Did we have a motion?
Oh, yeah, I thought Bev made the motion and Bob seconded it.
Correct. I'm sorry.
Thank you for checking, Tony.
You are a yes?
Yes.
Okay, Tony?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Deb?
Yeah.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Article nine. Community Preservation Act, Gilman Wade appropriation. Numbers are listed before you. I know the town manager had answered one of our questions on that in the when he responded to our questions. Anyone have any comments, questions, concerns on this article?
Too many. But I'm going to just make a couple of comments here. I think this article should be passed over. I think last night's Board of Selectment meeting reinforced that issue with the, let's say, presentation of bringing Mass General Law Chapter forty-five before the town next fall to actually create a parks commission or a, you know, somebody to actually be in charge of this. Because you can go back to July ninth of last year, and this was presented to the CPC by the Parks and Cemetery. And then in September tenth, it was presented by the Rec Commission. And it was updated by the Rec Commission and the Parks Department. And now, as you see, the item agent to expend is listed as building and grounds. And nobody, if you notice, there is no submitted by anybody on this thing. All the other articles say submitted by the Select Board on behalf of the ones right above it. This one here does say nothing. Um, and I think that's exactly what this thing needs to do. It needs to be sent back to the drawing board to make it legal so that we don't get the town in a mess. And that's my two cents.
Absolutely. It's a plan without a plan. It's a lack of a plan.
If if I may add, I did not get to see the presentation that Mr. Dill gave. I am a little concerned from what I've seen and read that I I think conceptually they have an idea, but I'm not sure that they have a fully vested plan. And I'm also a little concerned that if the school uses Gilman Wade, I guess it, where do the funds come from? Do the school put it in their budget, or do we put it in ours? We pay for it either way. I I would like to see a better plan, and maybe it be brought back up at Fall Town Meeting. I'm just a little concerned that the, while I think the intentions of the individuals that are trying to do this and improve that facility, to make it a really good facility, I think they're they're on the right track. I'm just not sure that the the plan has been fleshed out enough in my mind.
I think that, I think that would be very wise. I I am really afraid that this loosely knit, thrown together plan isn't going to work. I don't want them to come back and say, we need another hundred thousand dollars because there's no water in the well. It's, what they're trying to do, I don't think it's going to work. And there's just legal stuff way back to where the land was given to the school, to the Templeton High School. So it's a gray area as to where kids from other towns come in. And then you have the school throwing in ten thousand dollars. Well, what about the year after and the year after? Who's going to maintain it? This is like this big, huge bunch of questions without a really good answer. And I don't want it to be another, another one of these police station where we spend up, we vote for all this money, and then they turn around, they come back and they say, oh, it's not enough, or the senior center where now we need a roof, you know, we do throw things at the wall to see if they step. But they don't stick good enough to stay, and we end up having to rehash it. So it needs to go back to the drawing board. And it needs to be planned out a whole lot better from the beginning until the end. That's my opinion.
Mr. Chairman, if I could weigh in, please?
Yes, go ahead.
As it will spring. And looking at this from an overall perspective of the town, I asked this question sometime back about what about the other parks? Houghton Park in in Otter River being one of them. And the response I got is, nobody uses it. You know what I say? That's hogwash. Why do I say that? I ended up speaking to somebody that lives right next to there, and it's being used. I'm sorry, it's being used. We're not putting money into those other parks. And I have to agree with Bob. This needs to take and end up being taken off. Nobody put it forward per se. It needs to be taken off per se. We have, if we're going to end up getting a a Parks and Recreation Commission, we should be looking at all of them and spreading them out money on so that they're all in good shape and not just one. We used to have another ball field in Templeton Center, but the school took that away. So now we're we're down to three areas, and all we're doing is is putting all our eggs into one basket here and foregoing the others. That's not fair to those people in those precincts that have used those fields now and over the years.
Well, I don't think that's the intent of this article is to ignore those. I think that Gilman Wade is by far the most used park we have. A tenfold, and that and that they're trying to improve that. They're they're not saying, you know, take this money and don't put anything to anyone, any of the other parks. That's that's not what they're saying. So I I don't think it's apples to apples comparison. If the people of the town, if the people of the town, hold on, if the people of the town want improvements on those others, and we have a Parks and Recreation Committee, then they'll have the proper, the proper way to go through it.
If I might, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to, I'm going to focus just on this, the article nine here for a second, and and just to give you another reason why it's, because there's so many, it's not even funny. The, when this was brought to CPC, it was brought to CPC, and it left there as a two hundred and sixty thousand dollar project with two hundred and thirty thousand coming out of CPC funds and the thirty thousand coming between the Rec Department and the school. Now, let's do a little math. That's two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The irrigation system max cost that they got was a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. The max cost that they got for the fencing was thirty-five thousand dollars. That's a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. And as you can see in this, the concession stand, which was the balance of that, has been removed. Now, there are two bathrooms that somehow or another they're trying to call public, even though they're only going to be used by the school, not by the public. So but anyway, in all, according to Scott Dill, all the items are already there. They just have to be installed. What's that? Oh, they just have to be installed. So we're we're left with a hundred and, let's say, three thousand dollars to install toilets. You know, this plan has been brought in, extended, contracted, changed. It's changed hands. We don't even know honestly who has control of this, because as Bev, let's say, pointed out, the deed to this, when it was given to the town, states with preference to the high school of the town of Templeton. So now, what makes Narragansett any more the high school of the town of Templeton than Monty Tech? I don't know. And it doesn't say anything about regional district, and neither does anything in CPC funding. So yeah, this article needs to be passed. It needs to be a no vote, and that's what I support. And I could go on for days, and I'm just not interested.
Yeah, one other, one other question that I have, Mr. Chairman, is you heard about the ten thousand dollars. I don't recall any time that the selectmen were offered ten thousand dollars towards this. You can't end up giving, we're going to get into trouble like we have in other things, accepting gifts. It's it's just like the the Galvin Road affair where a town employee accepted a gift, and now the selectmen have to take and backpedal and say, that's not acceptable. The same thing here. That's not acceptable to take and get money from the the school district of ten thousand dollars unless unless it's given through the selectmen. So I
I think that that was addressed in Adam's article, a question we had on article nine. I did explain that one caveat of CPA funding is that no CPA funds can supplant existing approved funds. Thus, whatever funds are slated for, be spent on that identified target before CPA funds can be used for the same item. CPA funds could be used only after it's expended. It was never listed in the draft. They were a final article for the CPC.
We're still talking about
Go ahead, Mr., go ahead, Adam.
No, I mean, nobody asked me any questions particularly about this. I believe the intent is to finish up the Gilman Wade project. Folks have their concerns with that.
I have a question, Adam.
Oh, I I was just going to answer the donation question, because the board made it very clear on the fact that donations will have to be accepted by the Select Board by state law. So I just, I just want to take, make note of that. I just don't want people to think that we're, we are aware and we're doing what we can to address that.
Go ahead, Tony.
Okay, so I thought I heard Bob say that part of the money is to basically finish the bathrooms, but then they would not be used for public use. They'd only be used for the school?
When that was presented, Tony, Scott Dill came in and presented, and he said that they would, at the time, he said that they would, they had it, this time they were using Scotty's bodies or something out there, and that they wanted to get these done. They wouldn't be open to the public, but they'd be available during the games and so forth. And that they wanted them to be able to be washed out. This is the part that stuck in my head. Because he wanted them to be able to be washed by a hose, so somebody just go in there and spray down the room. That was just my memory of it. So
So when they have youth soccer or, you know, the youth softball and stuff that they have up there, they're not available to those people?
From what it sounded like to me, the people that were going to have key, it was only going to be open during sporting events. So it wasn't a public venue, like
If no one was using the park, it wouldn't be left open so that there wasn't vandalism inside, but if
Okay, and I
or events.
That
And it would be open.
Right, but if there's youth soccer going on, it's not just high school events.
No.
Okay.
But it's not while the parks open either. It's only while there's events.
Okay. Yeah. No, I get that. I get that.
Tony, was there a question towards me you had?
No. It was, it was answered. Thank you, Mr. Administrator.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, if I could just add a little thing. People got to understand that right now, without this monies, there has been expended well over a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The largest pot was the Pajari Fund, and I believe it was eighty thousand dollars that was given to end up getting this in shape. They since have moved ball fields around, which is causing more things to be added on to end up upgrading that. So I mean, this is, this is a case of you ended up having So I mean, this is, this is a case of you ended up having a field, you ended up doing something with it, you had the money. Now, there was things changed around and with, with, with throwing more and more money. I have to agree with Bev. You keep throwing money at this thing and it's, it's, it's not right. We need to take and end up having a better plan all overall about this thing. And I'll, I'll make the motion to uh, recommend a no vote uh, with the clarification that it was not expended, it was not recommended by the, either the selectmen or CPC. Put this article on.
Okay, so motion's been made and seconded. Any further comments and concerns? Okay, on Article Nine, I'll be doing a roll call vote. The motion was made to, as a no vote. So if you're voting uh, yes on the motion that was made, it would be to reject this article. Bev?
Yes.
Tony?
Yeah, I'm all for upgrading Gilman Way, but I think the plan needs a better uh, thing. So I'm a yes.
Will?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Deb?
Um, I'm a yes. Like Tony, I'm all for upgrading the field and taking care of it if there's a better plan in place.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm a no. Article Ten, a rescission of authorized but unissued debt. Listed here before us. Any questions, comments, concerns on the landfill closure listed uh, in Article Ten?
Adam, could you explain this a little bit?
Yeah, this is a article that basically you, what you see is the meeting date back in nineteen eighty-eight. The town authorized a borrowing of one million nine hundred seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars to be used for the purpose of closing the landfill. And uh, essentially what we did is we borrowed one million five hundred nine thousand one hundred forty-one. So this will ultimately reduce the amount of authorized debt that we carry on our books. So, you would rescind the authorization of the four sixty-nine, six oh nine you see up on your screen. Um, and that, uh, which was authorized by town meeting back in nineteen eighty-eight uh, for the purposes of the uh, landfill closure. So this will um, take off some of that. We have more of these that we're working on as well. Um, this was brought to my attention by the treasure collector.
So we don't owe anybody any money or?
This is just money that the town authorized for debt. But they only used so much of that debt, but we still have because the total amount was authorized on, on the books. Basically, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for-
Go ahead.
Administrator. The Board of Health is in charge of this particular thing and I know that they do inspections on a yearly basis. If there's an issue with the, the closure and they have, they need to take and end up redoing it, could these funds be used, uh, even some of these funds be used for that? And if so, uh, getting rid of all of these funds does, doesn't give us the ability. We would have to go out and do additional uh, borrowing, would we not?
It would depend on what the intent of the article meant at the time back in nineteen eighty-eight, Will. And um, ultimately, um, the town only utilized a portion of that. So what we have here is this money that's just sitting there. I mean, we could keep it on our books or we could clean it, clean them up and take care of this at the town meeting.
No, I'm not, I, I'm not advocating we keep the whole amount. Uh, I, I'm saying that, that uh, we end up, it was for the closure. I remember this being for the closure. And if there's issues with the closure itself, say it's, it's become, it's, it's developed a leak or something. Uh, could, these funds could have been used for, for uh, upgrading that and redoing it, right?
These funds don't exist, do they? It's just an authorization to go to that amount, right? Yes, but these funds don't even exist.
We were just authorized to borrow up till that amount. And at this point, if I understand correctly, we could, technically, we could borrow four hundred and sixty-nine thousand more if they needed it there. But they carry an extra four hundred and seventy thousand basically on the, on our debt. I think, I think clearing the books far outweighs the uh, if we have to come back and ask for another twenty thousand to fix a small problem or something that rise.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would recommend to go, if that were to be the case, to go back to town meeting and get a new issuance for whatever the problem might be for transparency anyways.
You really have to because this is foreclosure. So if there was another problem, it would be a totally different, different thing.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, uh, just for, just for clarification. We ended up borrowing whatever amount and this is the leftover amount. This is part of a bond that's, that was. Excuse me?
I don't think, I don't think that's correct, Will.
Okay.
The way I understand it is the town was authorized and I'm gonna, I, I don't remember Adam's exact numbers, but for argument's sake, the town was authorized to borrow one point five million dollars to close the landfill. They only needed a million. They only borrowed a million. And that there was this four hundred and sixty-nine, six oh nine left available to borrow, but they didn't do it. So it's money that the town could technically borrow from thirty-three years ago, but it doesn't exist. So they didn't borrow the whole amount. They borrowed what they need.
Thank you for the clarification, Tony. At least somebody could clarify that for me as well as all the people watching.
So the original authorization amount was one million nine seventy-eight, seven fifty. The amount borrowed was one million five oh nine, one forty-one. And that's what brings us to the four sixty-nine, six oh nine.
So, so they thought it was gonna cost about two million to close the landfill. It costs one point five. That's what's left over. In availability to borrow, it was never borrowed.
We did well. We saved money.
Yeah, I guarantee if it was borrowed, that cash would have been gone a long time ago.
Oh, yeah. That and sixteen when kinda cleaned house.
Yeah, that, yeah, I, I like this idea, Adam, of anything like that, that you have that's on the books, that really can be done nothing with. Get it off because it's gonna, it's gonna help our uh, our, our rating with Moody's or Standard and Poor's, our bond rating.
Totally agree with that, Tony.
We're taking care of them, one at a time.
Does anyone have anything else new on Article Ten?
I'll make a motion to recommend a yes vote on Article Ten.
I will second it.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any comments, concerns? Do a roll call vote. Bev?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Article eleven, the Templeton Scholarship Fund. Uh, listed before us is the uh, scholarship fund appropriation article. Anyone have any comments, concerns on?
I do have a, I do have a comment with um, with the rising cost of college, I, I know this article's been four thousand dollars for years and years and years that I think maybe next year, uh, they should look at increasing the amount. Either A, to give it out to more people or increase the amount given to the individuals. It's just, you know, the cost of college is skyrocketing. So, while I think it's a great thing, uh, I think maybe you could find another four or five thousand dollars to put to this.
What kind of shape we're in next year?
Just, just for clarification, Tony, you're right. It's, it's, it's four thousand dollars. But this was increased uh, twice from one thousand to two thousand. And then it went from two thousand to, to the present four thousand. So it has gone up. So people, it shouldn't be-
No, I just said from my memory, Will, of, I, I remember the amount. It's always been four thousand.
That's because you're a new guy.
Anyone have any other questions or comments on the Article eleven?
I recommend approval, uh, recommend, make a motion to approve Article eleven as written.
Hey, motions have been seconded. Any other discussion?
Just to take it up, people know that this is separate from the general fund. Uh, because uh, the monies is there and it may take a while to use it uh, out of this fund. And if we ended up having it in the general fund, it would become free cash at the end of the year. This way it's available uh, over a period of time to give out scholarships.
Yeah, at the end of the fiscal year, it can be encumbered to continue on. Any other questions or comments? Do a roll call vote. Bob?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Bev?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Article twelve, property valuation account. To raise and appropriate the money listed on the article, twenty thousand dollars listed in Article twelve. Any questions, comments, concerns on this article?
Just, just a comment, Mr. Chairman. When I ended up talking about it on the fifteenth, uh, I was in error on the length of time about the revaluation. It used to be three years be, because of the modern, uh, Modernization Act, it went to uh, uh, to take and end up for, for five years. So I, I want everybody to take and know that this is, this, this is a five-year process and not a three-year process. And the same thing uh, for this. It's not part of the general fund because it nee, it needs to be built up so that when we do the revaluation, the money's there.
And this one also is a decrease from last fiscal year of two thousand five hundred.
Okay. Thank you, Adam. Uh, any other questions, comments, concerns on Article twelve? Dot roll call vote. Uh, Bob?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Deb?
Yeah.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Who made the motion?
Yeah, I don't think, yeah, thank you. I didn't hear that. I don't think anyone made a motion.
I don't think anyone did. I'll make a motion to recommend a yes vote.
I'll second it.
Okay. All right. Sorry, Tom.
Uh, no problem. You wanna revote or are you still? It's been made and seconded. Bob?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Bev?
Yes.
Will?
I'm still a yes.
Good. Deb? Amy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Just jumping the gun, trying to move things along. Article thirteen, uh, set the salaries of elected town officials, uh, the three salaries that are listed there below. Uh, any uh, comments and questions on this article?
Uh, my, I, I just have a comment on the Board of Selectmen. I know some take it, some don't. Uh, I still believe that this should be tied to a, an attendance or some type of, some type of metrics that uh, people show up to the meetings that they shouldn't get the money just for being on the board.
You're saying like it should be prorated?
No, I think that you, you gotta make eighty-five percent of the meetings, uh, unless, you know, you have, you know, an approved absence and I don't know, you know, it'd be something we'd have to look at, who approves the absence. But um, because you don't feel like making it today is not a good reason.
I concur.
I think the sewer, the water commissioners should be included in this. Unless they, because I think they get paid.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, Mr. Chairman, if I might. Um, and I don't mean, I'm sorry to cut you off if I did, Bev. Um, all I wanted to say, this is a reference to the same thing, is I don't believe the town clerk, Board of Selectmen and Sewer Commissioner represent the full scope of uh, the parties under MGL Chapter forty-one, Section one oh eight that are required to be on this list. And uh, that's my problem with the whole article and has been for years and uh, it's time that I'm voting no.
And I actually thought, I actually think, and we discussed this last year, that the town clerk should be voted on separately.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And we also discussed last year, I believe, about putting the uh, uh, light and water on here.
I believe you're correct.
Yeah.
If, if I can, Mr. Chairman, it, it looks to me like we've discussed this, the selectmen have seen this. They have not listened to the recommendations of the Advisory Committee to include all elected officials as far as salary. And that's, that's not doing their job if they can't follow mass general law.
You know, a nu, number of people have, you know, opinions on this as far as that goes and, and I appreciate Bob's uh, thing also. I, I also guess I wanna play a little devil's advocate on, uh, you know, voting no on this article will, you know, certainly would be detrimental as far as, if, if nothing else to the town clerk, which I don't think is right in my opinion.
Well, then we could do a substitute motion.
On the town floor, you could make, on the town floor, you could make a substitute motion, yes.
Yes.
Just saying that if a substitute motion was not to pass, I don't, I still don't think that is the right thing. I, I think somehow things need to be adjusted prior to the warrant being set to come before the, the Board of Selectmen and-
I agree with that.
Committee. I, I think that's my only concern. I don't think it'd be morally right to do that to, you know, to prove a point at someone's uh, pay rate.
Well, uh, Mr. Smith, if I might, um, how do you go about changing in advance when we can't do any of that? And it's been suggested year upon year and nothing gets done. Um,
I'm not disagreeing with you, Bob. I'm, I'm just-
I'm just saying, when do you, when do you put up the line? Do you never?
Maybe like Bev said, as a substitute motion. I, I guess that's the-
Oh, I absolutely agree with that. I think, you know, for the clerk, I think the clerk's position and I think the vote on that would be by all of us right here would be a yes. Um, you know, as an individual item, I do. Um, but I just think for myself, it's the basis of not having the balance of the personnel under this that is my basis for no. And, you know, whether or not the select board has decided to listen to the people over the last number of years, um, is on them. And we can make those individual motions at the town floor and I don't think that precludes us from saying no today. Um, just my-
Oh, absolutely. That's your, that's your opinion. You have the right to that, certainly.
That's all. Mike, if I could jump in here for a second, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, go ahead, Deb.
So, the board did discuss this uh, as well. I, I'm responsible for putting together the draft warrant. Obviously, the board um, votes on the warrant and they control the warrant. The, the question is ultimately, um, and like I told the select board, getting guidance to move forward and there is a discussion. The, the question becomes, because light is, there's a difference between light and water. In my time, I'd never seen a, a light budget, even when I, going back to chicken be going into the budget. Um, water is different than light. Uh, water, uh, light is exempt um, from going. So, I really wanna differential, differentiate those two um, from the, the discussion, if you will, on the elected officials. That's why I made it clear that these are the ones within our enterprise funds and our budget that we're presenting uh, to town meeting. Also, on the motion, we're gonna have a change because it says Board of Selectmen on here and I put, I should have put Select Board uh, each. The select board's aware. They're working with me on it. And I know um, some folks wanna see it happen sooner rather than later. But it's on the radar screen and that's all I can really say to that at this point.
And it's not on the map. It's called the path of least resistance. And for too many years, our selectmen take the path of least resistance because it takes more backbone to make a change than it does to go along year after year. The water department can't borrow money without coming to the town because they are a town department. It was a big mistake years ago when they separated the water from the sewer. And it has cost us a lot of money in legal fees because of that.
Okay, but that doesn't, that's not relative to this article. I, I don't, I don't disagree with you.
Is that they need, they need to make a change and they need to make it next year. And as far as this goes, we will vote on this one and- As far as this goes, we will vote on this one and if we
Well, I mean, but Bev, I we we have some Select Board members that work extremely hard and um they're they're on it. I mean, it it's it's just a matter of
See, at this time next year, we'll see.
If I, if I might, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
You know, um simply put, um if that was the position and you removed the accord with MGL forty-one, section one oh eight, um there would be less problem. But when you put up a Mass General Law that has certain parameters on it and then don't follow them, um it's very hard to say yes. And uh I guess that's going to be my last word on that.
Mr. Chairman, if I could weigh in, please. The wills to take and end up addressing a couple of things. Uh our administrator mentioned about uh the budgets of that, that those departments not being on the the warrant. The Water Department budget used to be on un- until uh a- a- as Bev put it, the least resistance. There was a pushback and it was never addressed per se by the selectmen. Number, that's number one. Because the there was an issue with their with their budget one year and it took two iterations to get it passed. Num- number two, and I have to agree with Bob, that the fact that uh when you end up putting a Mass General Law within a warrant article, you must follow that warrant, that Mass General Law. This does not follow that Mass General Law. Now, you can end up, we could end up rejecting this and and actually taking uh the uh the step of making a substitute motion by the Advisory Committee to drop that and vote with the recommendation that next year we should be following Mass General Law and including the Water and Sewer Department. That would be, to me, the best o- of all worlds of how to address this so that people can see that we're doing our job and maybe the selectmen need to take and address this much quicker. They've known for this, about this for a couple of years.
If you'd like to make a substitute motion on the floor, Will, you certainly can as an individual taxpayer. That's certainly something that if you feel that strongly on that, you
Mr. Chairman, if I could, it's possible for, it's possible for the it's it's possible for the uh Advisory Committee. That's our recommendation. Don't, don't, don't end up pushing it off onto individuals. We as a, we should act as a committee a- as to the the disinterest of the of the town. Don't end up pawning it off to onto an individual when you do disagree with the whole process.
Are you done ranting?
No, he's right.
Does anyone have any further information on this article?
Is that a motion, Will?
That is a motion is to uh vote no with making a substitute motion uh getting rid of Mass General Law forty-one, one oh eight, so that we can end up having a yes vote on that. And with the recommendation that next year, this this gets corrected.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this article?
Well, if I can jump in?
Yes, go ahead, Adam.
No, I I think there's a lot of discussion. I think this is something that I could explore with uh town council and get an opinion, um because I, like I mentioned before, differentiating light and water. Um and making sure when you we do it, we want to do it right. That's why when the Select Board brought it up, I'm the one who instructed them not to do that right at that meeting when they're approving the warrant. Because I wouldn't want to make a decision until I get an opinion that clearly states exactly how we should do it. Um and I I do want to take note that um the Select Board members that are on the board today weren't the members there when things changed. All we can do is just work to make it better. That's it. Thank you.
Does anyone have anything further on this article? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. A yes vote is voting no against this article according to the motion made and seconded. Bob?
Mr. Su- Mr. Chairman, that's not totally correct.
That is correct.
I I also part of that motion was to take and make a substitute motion eliminating Mass General Law so that we could vote on that separately.
I wrote it down as a motion to recommend a no vote, would like to make a substitute motion removing language MGL chapter forty-one, section one oh eight, Will.
That's correct, Deb.
Okay. And who seconded it? Bob? Sorry.
Yep.
Thank you.
So a yes vote is no with the substitute motion that will. Bob?
Yes, I'm right. Yes is a no?
Correct.
Yes, yes is a no.
Yeah, okay, yes.
Tony?
No.
Will?
Yes.
Deb?
No.
Deb?
Yes.
Amy?
No.
And I'm a no.
So fu- fundamentally, Will, I understand what you're trying to do. And I don't necessarily disagree with it, but I just don't think it's fair to even mess with the town clerk's salary. I just don't think it's fair to her. Um, that she's caught, that's, I I know that's not your intent. Uh just afraid that any motion or substitute motion might confuse people. And so, so um
I don't think he understands.
I do understand.
I don't think you understand that I was
No, I absolutely understand.
I was actually putting a another substitute motion
I understand. I know what you were trying to do. I'm just afraid that altering the motion might confuse people and they may end up voting no because they say, oh, advisory recommended no, and I just think it could, you don't know how many people are going to be there. And while conceptually, I understand what you're trying to do. I do.
But with us also making the substitute motion and eliminating that and actually put some verbiage there, that would give clarification.
Well, uh, okay, but um
Tom, I do have one comment.
Yes.
Jeff Bennett, Town of Sterling, Mass, has two separate articles citing MGL chapter forty-one, section one oh eight on elected salaries. One for light commissioners and another for town elected official salaries. Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, would we like to make any other motion on article thirteen? Without the, any substitute motion?
By the way, the Town of Littleton also has that separate.
We don't live in Littleton and we don't live in Sterling. Templeton.
Please, m- m- mister, mister
Does anyone else have?
I'm I'm just trying to do a clarification that there's other communities that address this in a different manner so that we had the opportunity to take and do the same.
Maybe they do it right, Tony.
There's nothing wrong with that.
Okay, thank you.
Jesus Christ.
He's got no vote in this. Does anyone have anything else on this article? Okay. Article fourteen.
Want me to take this one?
On a, Adam, on a clarification, do you know if we'd need to still? The motion that was made to uh with the substitute motion to not with the four yes votes still constitute a uh yes on that article?
So the vote was not to do it, right?
So what we
The vote was yes, not to, right?
Right.
Not to do a substitute, vote no and do a substitute motion. That was what the vote was.
Okay.
So usually, what we'll do is at the meeting, we'll read, you know, the um, we'll read that motion so that, hang on, I've got a lot of screens open. Um so we would read um that the mo- the Advisory Committee recommends and no vote on this article would like to see a substitute motion removing language MGL chapter forty-one, section one oh eight. We would say three members were in favor of this article and or in favor of that and four members voted no. So it's tricky how it's worded.
That's that's correct, Deb. That's exactly
That's how it'll, that's how it'll be read. And Tom, when you read the advisories committee, you'll just explain that a little bit more.
So essentially, the Advisory Committee recommends in favor of the article.
Four to three.
Four to three, yes.
Well, well, are we gonna do a ta- do a substitute motion to to give the town clerk her money?
We don't have to.
Yeah.
But you you had a no vote on that article. You need, if you end up wanting a yes, yes vote on that uh that per se, don't you think we
We had a no vote that didn't pass, though.
Okay.
I I would entertain a motion, uh a motion to approve article thirteen as written. That would kind of clear everything up at this point.
Alright, so moved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for clearing that up.
Do I have a second?
And both, both votes should should be shown as to what we, what we voted.
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further comments? Do a roll call vote, Tony?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Will?
No.
Bev?
No.
Amy?
Yes.
Bob? And I'm a yes. That way it's a little less confusing. We can get it the more accurate. Okay, next up, article fourteen, Council on Aging. See if the town will adopt the following. It's quite a lengthy article uh there before us. Um, if they don't have any questions, comments, concerns on the the article before us.
Adam, why are they doing this? I thought we had the, had a council on aging.
Well, it wasn't codified the bylaw, which was required by Mass General Law, chapter fifty, section eight B. Um, this was established back in nineteen seventy-six, but they never um codified this portion of it.
Oh, okay. All right. Might have us legal by the time you're done here, honey.
Do I have any other comments and concerns on this article?
I make a motion to accept article fourteen as written.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Comments, questions, concerns? Do a roll call vote, Tony?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Bev?
Yeah.
Amy?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, article fifteen, uh Disability Commission. Article is listed here before us, adopting the provisions of Mass General Law, chapter forty, section eight J. Any questions, comments, concerns on this article?
Adam, could you explain what this commission's gonna do?
This commission is established um to, this was a recommendation within our ADA self-evaluations transition plan that we have. There are people that serve on this board to identify issues that we have in town, any kind of non-conforming um use that can impede somebody's ability to move around. They keep notes on all that and uh it was a recommendation that we adopt this and accept the provisions of Mass General Law, chapter forty, section eight J. Um the board has the authority to um, in in this case, put a minimum of five members on the board. Um, we here um haven't the question ultimately is going to be, um establishing this would fulfill that uh recommendation. And the question we'll have to see in the future is whether or not there's enough um interest to serve on the Disability Commission.
I think it will give people that have family members that are stable a voice that they don't have right now. And I think you will probably do better than we would ever, ever dreamed. At least it's an opportunity. I'll make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead, Bob.
All right, um, I don't support this article, even though I support the cause. Um, and the reason that I don't support this article is because it's done in violation of everything that we're supposed to be doing. Um, and I say that because if you look about three or four lines down in this uh in this article, um it states, one member shall be from the immediate family persons, one member from here and one member shall be from the current select, a current Select Board member. Now, if you look, if you look at the Financial Management Review that we just got, number two of the suggestions on that is prohibit elected officials from holding any other positions, which is under chapter fifty-nine, article one, restricts board members from serving on another elected or appointed capacity. Um, and we're doing it again. Um, and still, we, you know, this is article two, this is number two of the priorities that they gave us in two thousand nine. We're still in violation of these, we're still not following them, and we're setting up a new one in violation of them. Um, it seems foolish. And I can't support it.
That's a point. And that's a problem we've had for a long time.
Anyone have any comments or questions, concerns on this article?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could weigh in.
Yes, go ahead.
We end up having a recommendation by the DOR and it's, it is number two, two. And to take and end up having this article presented and having a Select Board member put on as a member flies in the face of the DOR. We're either gonna follow their recommendations or say, especially when you have a Mass General Law that says you shouldn't. I mean, this has been going on for, since two, two thousand and nine, that uh that recommendation. And here we are in two thousand and twenty-one. Come on now. This this is, this is, this takes, it shouldn't take that long to end up ge- getting the message that you shouldn't include Select Board members on these type of commi- committees and commissions. I mean, I, chapter nine, article one, also pro- prohibits people from being on the Advisory Board. The same thing, you know, it's, 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 and we follow that. So come on, why can't the selectmen follow this particular Mass General Law? And it it it's really clear. It says prohibit elected officials from holding any other office. That's not the, that's, that's number two on the DOR. It's, it's very simple, very straightforward. I I agree with the intent of this, except for having a Select Board member on this committee.
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes, go ahead, Adam.
The language was pulled from statute, so.
Well, then you can make adjustments to it.
Well, Adam, when you say the language was pulled, so it seems like there's a conflict. The Mass General Law says one thing. But you're saying statute says another?
And then this was also vetted through town council as well.
Yeah, and that's
But I'm, but I'm just saying, if if
Well
I I I think we have a difference of philosophy and
Yeah, I've been going through this since two thousand fifteen with this Select Board.
So what is the legal reading? Can legally as Board of Selectmen member be on a commission like this?
No. That's my legal
What did, what did town attorneys say, Adams? They vetted this?
Yeah.
The attorney under Carter stated that John Kaplis could be on the Vets Board. And that's been disputed
A John Kaplis article, this is this is an article on the Disability Commission at this point. We, we don't want to mix up the uh specials.
John's homes.
I mean, we already have Select Board members, even an advisory member on Capitol Planning Committee. I mean, we've done this.
They have to make changes.
I think you're, we're gonna get into issues of not being able to get enough volunteers, but I mean, that's a discussion I think we should take up more at the um, when we have our meeting with the state, joint meeting.
I think we should tell them that because we can't get volunteers, we do things illegally. I wouldn't say illegal.
I mean, that's
Does anybody have anything new on article fifteen? If not, I would entertain a motion on article fifteen.
I'll make a motion to recommend a yes vote on article fifteen.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. Any further discussion? Do a roll call vote. Bob?
No.
Tony?
Come back to me, please.
Deb?
Yes.
Dev?
No.
Amy?
Abstain.
Will?
No.
Tony?
I'm gonna abstain also.
And I'm a.
We do it and then submit it at fall town meeting.
Conceptually, I think it's a it's a good commission. I I just my experience being on commissions with the board of selectmen that people tend to feel like their voice isn't equal.
I have to agree with you, Tony.
That's one of the reasons why it's not allowed.
FY twenty-two, general fund operating budget, Article sixteen that before us.
I make a motion to accept Article sixteen as written.
I'll second.
And I have questions, comments, concerns on Article sixteen?
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes, go ahead, Will.
We had a couple of meetings and we discussed this operating budget. We came across a number of things that we were concerned about that should be addressed. We never made our recommendation. And the recommendation that we were talking about would not have included those things because they were they were not funded correctly and or 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 put put too much money into the thing as as far as that goes. Since we have not, and and if you look at the the budget book as far as our recommendation, it's TBD. We need to take and end up putting our foot forward and make those recommendations before we can end up actually voting on this.
Does anyone have anything else on Article sixteen?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, just to point out, Article sixteen, I won't be supporting as I stated before, because it relies on one term, one-time funds and doles out raises amounting to thirteen percent during a pandemic. Just doesn't seem like good practice to me. Um, so I will be a no voter.
Oh, so if I I certainly respect Mr. May's opinion and understand where he's coming from. I think that the raise for that individual has been very miscategorized and the approach of how we were gonna do it got all messed up. And and so I I don't think it's fair to that individual, but I certainly respect your opinion, Bob. I do want to say that I want to commend the town administrator. His charge was to give us a level service budget. Level service, not a level budget, but a level services. So we don't lose any services in town, and it only increased the town budget by less than one percent. And it it's a fraction of one percent. So so I think that's pretty good, given that we're in a pandemic. And I think he should be commended for that.
Mr. Chairman, if I can weigh in?
It's Tony. I appreciate it.
I agree with you, Tony. Go ahead, Will.
Uh, in the D O R document that we got, the financial review, the select board has a financial management plan that says that they would end up having a five percent goal for having free cash. In the last four years, it's been fourteen point two five percent. What does that tell you? It tells me that there is too much money in certain accounts that that people think that that we're going to use it, and that's deceiving the public. If it was put off separately, like and like some committee communities actually put it in their emergency reserve, it's still good. It still becomes free cash if it's not used, but it's not hidden. It's shown that we can end up using it in case of emergency. But to take and end up having, as as an example, you you got your insurance and benefits that last year was in the last couple of years, the money hasn't been used. Last year, even on the end of the year, B V A, it was a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars after we took out almost a hundred thousand dollars in transfers. So there was actually two hundred and almost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars too much in there. What did we do? We ended up increasing it from two point four million to over two five five million. That's that's another hundred thousand. This is got at some point, you can't end up putting, doing that and hiding this money from the public. I mean, I'm sorry.
I have a question for the town administrator. Are some of the funds, are some of the funds or some of the amounts that would be due in some of these accounts not known until after the fiscal year starts?
We budget the best we can. If there's excess money, then there's excess. There's many variables this year. I think we'll mention the insurance and benefits account. That's an account that's difficult to really predict. You don't know where unemployment insurance is gonna land. You don't know. You know your retirement number, and that one always goes up. So there's not many areas there where you could really kind of really gauge that number to have a tight budget, because if you have a tight budget there and you miscalculate, you could have an issue.
That that that's, I guess, where I'm leading is is some of them you have to budget based on information you have that you don't like, like, for example, certain salaries, you know what they're gonna be for a year. You know someone's gonna make X, they're gonna get a raise or whatever. You know that's gonna be, but there are accounts that as the year goes on, they could go up, they could go down, you just don't know. Is that correct?
That is correct. At some accounts, at the end of the year, I'm like, wow, I wasn't expecting that one to have.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, since the administrator brought it up about the unemployment, he must have not got the message that the the state has already said they they froze the unemployment numbers, so they wouldn't end up increasing.
You don't know that back when when you're doing the budget.
So we can't make adjustments? You you had you had plenty of times since they made that recommend that that issue came up to take and make recommendations on moving some money around to other operations. I'm sorry. It's.
Deb, you've got someone?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Okay, so I've got Jeff Bennett. Could advisory break down where free cash comes from, from leftover expenses, unexpected revenues to include free cash from previous year that has rolled over into the next fiscal year? Thank you, Jeff.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could just jump in here, I mean, I I want to really kind of sum this up. This is a budget that is less than half percent higher than your fiscal year twenty-one original appropriation, a less than half a percent. Now, I know we're public employees, so when raises, people see raises, they automatically take hits. There's a there's few in here, few. And there is money available for those other raises that we have to really look at. Also, the town was awarded twenty thousand dollars from the state and community compact dollars to do a wage and compensation study. That way, we could really go through and see what positions, where they should fall, what they should pay. I really want to highlight the fact that this budget is a half a percent. We almost have a million dollars in stabilization, or at least after the end of town meeting, if the the deposits article passes. And I think we've talked quite a bit about the budget. I think we had joint meetings to make those changes. I think even a couple of members here suggested some changes that we have made. We do this as collaboratively as possible. And we have those discussions. Is everybody agreeing on every single portion of the budget? Possibly there's a couple of things you may not agree with. But I think this is a budget that provides a level service. It's been vetted through many. It's been very transparent throughout the whole process. And there's no hidden secrets. Everybody knows what's in this budget. Everybody's been through the accounts, and I'm proud of what we've done. And I know without ears, we will have to continue to be cognizant. But this budget is balanced. And I feel we should move forward and adopt this budget.
If I can, Mr. Chairman.
I just a quick reminder, anyone, if you're not on camera, just to while we're screen sharing, to please just keep identifying yourself prior to speaking.
Yes, Will Spring. Uh, so you feel comfortable about the fact that we have had a part-time accountant from the beginning of the year and to go for another full year because it's not been totally funded. Is that what you're telling me?
Well, I'm not gonna get into personnel matters on a public meeting.
I'm not talking about personnel. I'm not talking about a person. I'm talking about a position that should be totally funded as to a full-time accountant. Now, we're going to have a part-time accountant until June, and then from from July till.
Well, I don't think that I don't think this article has anything to do with what positions the town has. It's just the thing and what's been put forward is the budgeting that he feels at this point is needed in the that accounting office. As far as down the road, if we need to hop hop on on harping on a new additional accounting monies or positions, I don't think while we're doing the general operating budget is the time to necessarily do that. I understand your opinion on the needing to have a full-time accountant and that, but at this point, we had the search committee. We didn't turn up anything. We're fortunate enough to have someone helping out with the as to going along. And it's I I think that what Adam's put forward is what he feels we can function with as far as to make sure the town is fiscally strong throughout the fiscal year at this point.
The reason I bring it up, Mr. Chairman, is that 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 these townspeople should be aware if if they if they feel in agreement that they want to continue to have a part-time accountant because it's not funded for a full-time, then they can end up voting for this budget. Elsewise, is if they know about it, they have the opportunity not to vote for this budget.
Okay, well, we've had two rounds of trying to find a full-time accountant and have not been successful yet. So I believe the town administrator is doing the best he can to ensure that the town accounting needs are met until such time we can find a full-time accountant. It's it's not that he doesn't want one or wants to leave it the way it is. It's the fact is that the climate right now is not such that people want to change jobs with the pandemic or the job isn't right for them. So there's a variety of reasons of why we can't get up. Like you said, that they've been given twenty thousand dollars to do a wage survey. You know, that's that's kind of a factor. I did see a lot of the people's salary requests, and it was their requests were above what we were offering.
And I looked at other communities, and I brought this up the last time that I looked at a couple of communities, and I brought that forward, and they were that the accountant was getting less, and they were the size, the same size, about the same size community. And and I and I I'm going to end up saying this. We agree to disagree on this particular subject as far as I'm done.
Hey, does anyone have anything new on Article sixteen?
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Absolutely.
Um, I've heard a couple.
Just identify yourself. I know I don't.
Love me. I'm that guy.
You are.
Uh, I just wanted to point out a couple of things were said that I'd like to add a little clarification to. Um, the fact that this budget is a level service budget and is being presented as less than one percent or a half a percent over may be true. But as Mr. Spring pointed out, when you have a year-to-year fourteen percent float built into your budget, that's really not that difficult. Um, when you're maintain, you're required to maintain five percent. So you have built in nine uh, in your budget of excess based on what we've done as a budget. Also, we have coming up on the near future here, another article that takes about two hundred thousand dollars out of the budget and puts it into a special article. So, yeah, I and I'm not believe me, I'm not trying to say that Adam didn't do a good job. Adam did a good job as for his first budget going through after picking up the pieces of what he was left. Um, and I don't think under normal circumstances, I'd probably be as critical. But if we're going to have you know, a ongoing fourteen percent float um, in our budget while using one-time funds and giving out raises in the like um, that are substantially above average. Um, I just can't support it. And I don't see how um, you know, taxpayers should. Um, they should be sent back. This should be sent back to the town administrator and the town selectmen and do a better job. Just simply put, um, come up with a hundred and thirty-nine, four oh three and get us out of using the one-time funds. Um, you know, it's there. So we're just digging a hole. Um, and you know, enough, nothing, uh, but Adam is an employee. He's also a taxpayer, but he has a job and he has a goal in his job and uh, that's different than the position of a taxpayer. Um, and to me, this budget uh, just doesn't do it.
Well.
I'm good.
Well, if I may, I understand what you're saying, and I certainly respect your opinion on that as far as the budget goes. But I also look at a little different side of that. I kind of am, uh, wouldn't mind if it came through and we had an eighteen percent cushion, because maybe that means that the department heads budgeted and put forward and was given what they thought they were gonna need to spend. And maybe they did a better job even than we expected them to do.
Right, but that ain't the case, Tom.
And we don't know that.
Yeah, we do.
Money left over because.
We do know that, Tom.
Prices.
We do know that. Because we can add. Because you can go through and you can look at the budgets, and right now our payrolls, if you're looking at it, are running about sixty-one percent year for this year. So that, you know, thirty-nine percent of four point seven million dollars is not gonna give us everything you're talking about.
I I'm just saying that maybe that some of the expenses that are left over at the end of the year aren't necessarily a bad thing sometimes. It's.
Oh, right, and we built, we 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 budget for five percent. It's the extra nine that's the problem. You know, the financial management calls for five. If the financial management plan calls for five, fourteen is sloppy. Is it not? How do you say being off by a larger percent than you're trying to be ahead is not sloppy? Fourteen percent of what budget are you referring to? Um, fourteen percent free cash. Mr. Mr. Spring just presented that in the last four years, the average free cash has been fourteen percent. So you're looking at a historical trend from before when I took over. Historical trend, Adam, yes.
And by the way, this was not, this is not something I came up with. It's the figures that the D O R on their financial review came up with. They're the ones that put the that figure out, that average figure. The high was almost eighteen percent.
Yeah, seventeen and something back in eighteen, wasn't it?
Yep.
Yeah.
I mean, it's pretty hard for me to sit here as a member of this committee and go and and being asked questions about the budget to townspeople that I know and to end up telling them, oh, yeah, it's okay, we're giving out raises of two years in a row of of over twelve and a half percent. I mean, they went, are you kidding me? I don't even get that amount.
As they are lined up at the food pantry. You're in a pandemic that did not just land on the damn school. There are in a pandemic that did not just land on the damn school. You know?
So am I going to respond to that?
I'm not looking for a response, Adam. I just, you know. No, I mean, I hate my. I, I think if this, does anyone have anything to put into this?
Mr. Chairman, move the question.
Yeah, we do have, we do have a motion to recommend a yes vote that was made by Tony. I seconded it. So I think if everybody's good, we can roll call a vote.
Okay, do a roll call vote. Will? Will?
No, no.
Bob?
No.
Deb?
Yes.
Deb?
No.
Tony?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Thank you.
Just one point, Mr. Chairman, before we go on. Anytime you have a split vote like that, members of the dissenting have the opportunity at the, at the town meeting to explain why they are not, they didn't vote for any particular article.
Absolutely, Will. You can explain anything you'd like at town meeting. You are a taxpayer and certainly have that right.
Yeah, but not as a member of the board.
Oh, yes, I can. I, I took, I took part in that vote and I can tell them why I voted no. Yes, I can.
The moderator asks the chairman of the advisory committee what our recommendation is. That article passed four to three. Our recommendation is for a yes vote.
That's correct. And you can end up then having the dissenting members get up and discuss why they voted against it. And that's, that's protocol and it's done in every community. I'm sorry that you disagree with that.
That's up to the moderator at that point.
But then you can get up as a citizen anyway, so.
Correct.
Checked, we are right to speak.
That's correct. You can get up as a citizen. Anyone can.
Let's roll along. I'm getting tired.
Article 17, FY22 capital budget is listed below. Anyone have any questions, comments, concerns on that?
Adam. What luck are we going to have getting fire and EMS stuff back under their under their own envelope? You know?
Sorry, I'm trying to, trying to understand.
Money was supposed to pay for the fire department. Is that going to change in the next few, in the near future? Right now, you've got it in the ambulance receipts. You've got in the general fund. Is that going to come out?
Well, right now, what we're looking at from the budget discussion was to separate those out of the operating end. As you can see with this capital budget here, the ambulance computers at 10,000 is coming out from ambulance receipts. So I think we're already starting that process. And it will take some time for me to work with the fire chief and to get that all. That's a priority of coming out of our budget discussions.
I make a motion to accept Article 16, 17.
I'll second it.
Hey, motions remain seconded. Do you have any further discussion? Roll call vote. Will?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Deb?
Yeah.
Amy?
Yes.
Bob?
No.
And I'm a yes. Article 18, FY22 special articles. The special articles as listed below. Or, yep, anyone have any discussion on Article 18?
Mr. Chairman, I've made myself very clear as to.
Can you just, I, I just say.
Well, if you give me a chance, I will.
Okay.
I've made myself very clear on this as Will Spring, member of this committee, as to what I thought where these, these things, these particular items should be within their budgets.
Okay, does anyone have anything else on Article 18? Okay, hearing none. It would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend a yes vote on Article 18.
Second.
Motion's remain seconded. Anyone have anything else they'd like to add?
Yeah. In the management letter, it talks about use the free cash policy. And it says we should discontinue the use of free cash for general operations. I think that we have to limit the use of free cash to one-time expenses. There still exists a patent to use for general operations. To achieve a sustainable expense plan, we recommend Templeton suspend its use of free cash to fund the operating budget. Free cash should be, should be used to fund unanticipated costs, one-time expenditures and replenish reserves. It goes on, but basically we've got to stop using it like a piggy bank. And this stuff could have come from, a lot of it could have come from the fight, from the fire department budget, whatever you call it. Anyway, so much for that.
Does anyone have anything else on Article 18? Hey, none?
This is a, there was a lot of discussion over the capital and everything and what we did is we, for transparency purposes, for the discussion of the bylaw, we separated these. I have the authority to add special articles of less than 10,000. And these are one-time purchases that we're looking at and to make it cleaner, we did it this way to address some concerns that were brought out previously. These are all items that are needed. You see a lot of the, quite a bit of the street sign replacement. This helped Bob get resources to his department. The ACO truck, we wouldn't be able to purchase one unless this article were to pass. There's quite a few here that certainly needed by the departments and it will be a town meeting to talk about their needs for these items. That's all.
So it's okay, Mr. Chairman, Will Spring, so it's okay for us to use free cash in, in, in opposition of what the DOR says that we should cut down on the use of free cash. I guess, I guess, I guess that's okay because the administrator says we, he has the authority to do it.
So, so if you don't. Actually, what Bev read was that we shouldn't be using it for the general operating budget. And as Adam just said, these are one-time expense, one-time purchases. Bev did point that out very clearly for us.
So if you put, if you put these in the operating, if you put these in the department's operating budgets, people are going to complain that those are too high. So if you substitute it however you choose to do it. You know, this is like Adam said, this, this is kind of showing, you know, with full transparency, this is what we're spending your money on. And while, Will, I understand the previous article about anything under whatever it is, 10,000. But people are going to want to know where their money's being spent and it's just showing them that. So I don't think it's hurting anything.
Well, the Omni Must budget doesn't show where we're spending our money. I'm sorry.
Okay.
If, if I might, just want to make a point here. And I agree with what Tony said, that the idea that they're, you're trying to make it more transparent is not a bad thing. But just so you know, this, doing this this way, taking these small items that should or could be in each individual budget, each individual department's budget out, we're taking it out of the budget. So there's that 0.5% that you were talking about of an increase being, you know,
It would be high.
Diminished by the 38 too. Right.
You're right, but also, also conversely, the free cash of 14% would go down too.
Sure, sure. Yep. I don't disagree with you, Tony.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's just a philosophical way of doing it, so.
Yeah, no, and, and, right, it's just trying to do things the same so that people understand it. Because changing the process, you know, gets confusing for folks.
I, I agree. But like I said, I think some people, oh, just put it all in the budget and they're happy with that. But then there's other people that want it broken out, so.
It's like having a penny candy and going to the store and buying five pieces of penny candy instead of spending a nickel someplace else.
Penny candy, even before me, Bev.
Well, I remember penny candy, but I don't understand your analogy. I'm sorry.
Because you, you think you've got more for your money.
Oh.
If you've got five pieces of candy.
Think what she's trying to say is we need to buy more expensive equipment.
With that, we need a motion.
I would think so.
I make a motion to accept Article 18 as written.
Do I have a second? Deb's seconded. Okay, motions remain seconded. Anything additional on this article? Okay, do a roll call vote. Bob?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Deb?
Yeah.
Amy?
Yes.
Will?
Oh.
And I'm a yes. Article 19, the trackless multipurpose maintenance vehicle. Article listed before here to purchase for the highway, the trackless multipurpose maintenance vehicle. Any comments, questions, concerns on this article?
Mr. Chairman. Yes. This is Bob May, that guy. I'm just going to say, there's a couple of reasons why I have a problem with this. And the main one being the fact that it doesn't, it's not detailed enough. This talks about the track, the purchase of a trackless vehicle. The trackless vehicle is only $98,000 if I'm not mistaken. I believe there's roughly $115,000 in attachments that was part of this package and they're not specified here. And we have a history in Templeton of getting different things if we don't vote with specific specificity. So that's one reason why I will be a no vote on this. The other is the fact that we have 12.5 miles worth of plowable sidewalks in town. And we're planning on using 50% of our CapEx money and $100,000 in excess free cash, I believe it is, right? Yeah, free cash. To purchase a machine that has been on its death legs for three years but still operating and able to do those 12.5 miles. Now, we have 100 miles of roads in town. I know myself, I will never have a sidewalk on my street. So this, I, I can't personally justify spending $213,000 on a machine that benefits so few of the people in town. And the way it's written, it's just too big and allows for, you know, they literally, this article would allow for, and I'm not saying they would, but this article would allow them to go out and buy $98,000, a $98,000 piece of equipment and that's it. Out of the 213. There's no requirement to buy each individual part because they're not listed.
Mr. May, well, I understand your point. I guess I have faith in the town administrator as the chairman officer and as in the DPW head that they will buy the replacement for all the functions that that other machine does, including the mowing attachment and it does other things. So I understand what you're saying.
That, Tony.
I absolutely understand what you're saying, that it doesn't spell out all the different things.
But I remember an infield groomer.
Oh.
Oh, yeah. No, I do too. I do too.
And a $3,000 pull behind is not comparable to a $20,000 drive. And that's what we got when we said the other.
I, I agree with that.
So that's all. I'm just asking for specificity. I don't trust anybody.
There's, there's, Mr. Chairman, Will Spring, and there's always the dump body that never went on the vehicle that they said it would.
Yeah.
1984.
So, so Bob, just let me get a quick question to you on, on your, if I understand what you're saying and it's very spread out and that and very vague. What would be your opinion on this if it was itemized as far as what they're looking to purchase?
I would still be a no, simply because of the 12.5 miles.
Okay, I just curious if it made a difference if this was spelled out?
No, those are both, I, both the article killers for me.
So, so, but you realize that all, most, if not all, the sidewalks are technically town property. And if they're not cleared and someone has an accident, they can sue the town.
That's not true.
Tony, that's the nice thing. They can try and sue the town, but they can sue the town even if they don't and it's up to $5,000 and you really can't do it. It's not, it's not done.
All right, I'm, I stand corrected then. Thank you. But I, I'd like to say that it's not just for sidewalks. It does a lot of other things.
It does, the, that's the idea, Tony. See, and that's my problem because this doesn't say, like the flail mower, which is an over-the-rail mower, which is a $30,000 piece all by itself. It doesn't say that on here. So, you know, there's specific items. There's all kinds. There's two or three different plows. There's, you know.
I know.
Yeah.
I know what you're saying and I don't, I don't, I don't disagree with what you're saying, that it should have been itemized. But again, I, you know, I, I know what's happened in the past, but the people who are in charge now weren't part of that. So I, I guess I try to have faith in them.
I don't have my boots on, okay? And the voters' guide. The vote, vote, the voter's guide means nothing. We have gotten burned and burned and burned by believing the voter's guide. The little doohickey that they write underneath the article. You are voting on the article. Anybody that goes to town meeting, I don't care what the voter's guide says. It doesn't mean anything. You're voting on what that article says. If that article isn't clear as glass, then I've been burned too many times.
We learned that very clearly on the police station. Because there was, you know, specificity in that, that there was a certain type alone. There was this, there was all listed out in the shells and the, in the, the summaries. But it wasn't in the article.
Yep.
And we got hit with that. So it, you know, precedent for all this.
If I can, Mr. Chairman, if it, Mr. Chairman, Will Spring, Mr. May is absolutely correct. And, and Mrs. Bartolomeu is also correct that we have seen that what goes forward to this, to the people and that they're voting on is actually the warrant article. Not with the buyer's guide, not the summary. It's what's in the article. And time and time again, over the years, we have seen that and the townspeople have gotten burned. Why, that's why, why some of them don't come back. I mean, I've asked them why they don't go back and they end up pointing out why they don't come back.
So, so let me ask you the same question, Will, as far as I asked Bob. I know you're pointing out it's not spelled out correctly. If this was written differently, would you be supporting this article?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I would have, I would end up having to take and see, see what it is. I'm, I have to take and make my judgment on how this article is written.
I, I agree. I'm just saying, I'm just asking just to, for clarification for, you know, future articles for, you know, the town manager and the town administrator and as far as this goes.
It depends on what the articles are going forward. I have to vote on this particular article as it's written. I have to vote on this particular article as it's written. And that's, that's how I'm gonna end up voting.
So, uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept Article nineteen with the caveat that at town meeting, either the department, the DPW head or the town administrator, itemize the cost of the unit plus all the different attachments, so that it equals two thirteen seven fifty. So they can tell people what they're buying.
Well, you, Mr., uh, uh, Tony, come on, you ended up saying I couldn't make a substitute motion, and you're basically doing that.
No, I'm not, I'm not asking for a substitute motion, that's not what I'm asking. I'm just asking them to explain the breakdown of the two thirteen. So I'm not saying doing it in the article, just get up and say, it's seventy dollars for this and it's a hundred dollars for this, that's not a, um, a, a substitute motion. I don't want to change the motion, I just want an explanation of what goes into that, two hundred and thirteen thousand seven fifty.
It doesn't make any difference, they have to vote on the article. They could end up, they could end up saying that it had, you're buying roller skates with this thing, and they don't buy the roller skates, come on.
So we, Tony, you can just ask the question when we're there.
Okay, I can do that.
Yeah.
I, I'm fine, I'm sick of discussing this stuff, uh, time and time again.
Do I have a motion on the floor?
Mr. Sozik will be at town meeting, so.
Tony, are you making a motion to?
Yes, I'm making a motion, motion recommending Article nineteen.
A second.
Yes, vote.
Motion's been made and seconded, do we have anything else? Roll call vote, Will?
No.
Tony?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
What?
It's to you.
I didn't hear you, you blinked or something, no.
Amy?
No.
Bob? And I'm a yes.
So what was the final tally, I don't know if I might miss the chairman?
It was three yeses and four no, I believe, if that's, if I get that correct.
That's correct.
Article twenty, uh, Montezet Regional, uh, Vocational Technical Schools Budget. Any questions, comments, concerns on Article twenty?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, to a much lesser extent, but this, uh, I'm gonna have to, uh, uh, stand my ground and I'm gonna vote no on this too, due to the same thing as the use of one-time funds. Um, just, uh, my position.
Okay. Does anyone have anything else on Article twenty?
Uh, I do. Uh, Adam, do you know, um, you may not know this, and they may not have gotten to you, so today the governor announced, I think it was two point one million dollars to, um, vocational technical schools. Uh, do you know if there's any impact to Monty Teco that, and if that'll adjust this number?
As far as I know, they sent us their certified number and that.
Okay, thank you. All right, so this number technically could be, possibly could be lower.
They have reduced their number in the past and, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone have anything else on Article twenty? Not an entertaining motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend a yes vote on this article.
Do I have a second?
My second.
Okay, motions are made and seconded, any further discussion on Article twenty? Do a roll call vote, Bob?
Nope.
Tony?
Uh, yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Bev?
Nope.
Will?
Oh.
And I'm a yes.
Before you, oh, sorry, before you read Article twenty-one, um, there is a question from Jeff Bennett on the YouTube. When will the required written report to town meeting from the advisory committee be available to the voters? Um, I'm guessing he's asking about the sheet that we put in with the recommend, our recommendations. Um, so that I need to provide you, and I can hopefully provide you that tomorrow, I don't know when that, usually I see that at town meetings, so I don't know if it's put anywhere prior to town meeting.
Once, once you look over and everybody agrees that that's the way it is, then it just goes to Adam and he gets it printed out and put in the voter's guide.
Okay, thank you.
Just for clarification, and I'm sure Mr. Bennett is aware of this, uh, we are not required to take and end up making our recommendation by bylaw and, uh, it's, it's within, uh, just, uh, two days before the annual, at the annual town meeting. So we have until then to take and actually put it out there. I'm not, I'm not recommending we do that, I'm just saying, the bylaw states that's, that's, that's how long we can end up waiting. We, we've generally end up, have had it earlier than that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Article twenty-one, uh, Narragansett Regional School District, uh, Budget. Uh, anyone have any questions, comments, concerns on the school district budget? Article.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. May, Mr. May here again. Um, just, uh, gonna point out that, uh, um, this budget is reported as, I believe, a three point three nine percent increase. Um, and that's excluding the one-time funds. With the one-time funds, it would be a five point four percent increase. Um, which is the same as last year. So I leave it to the townspeople to decide whether or not the school has learned anything about their budget and how it hits the town. Um, and what are we gonna do next year? Um, because this budget, if I'm correct, uses, uh, a little over eight hundred thousand dollars in one-time funds from the school and us. Um, and, uh, you know, next year goes up five point four percent again. Only thing, we start off at one point nine percent in the whole. So, hey, um, you know, I, I, I just don't think we're learning the lesson. Uh, and I don't think the budget has been handled like we were told when we tried to put the ad hoc together. Um, and if we keep passing the buck, um, at some point, there ain't gonna be one to pass. Uh, it just really concerns me that where, you know, we just let them keep piling this up without doing anything, we know we only get three hundred thousand dollars in new growth, but we just keep signing up to these five, six, eight hundred thousand dollar increases in their budget. Like they're doing a great job for us. And it's killing us. I'm not saying they're doing bad, but their budget is killing us. And if we don't put limits on it, it will. And, uh, I'm a no, again. That's it.
You know, the last, the last time we went around with the school, those meetings were awful. And I don't, I really have a problem with the fact that they didn't, they didn't get the, they didn't get the message from the voters. People are not in good emotional shape right now. I can't even imagine going through another horrible town meeting. We are in a hole, the minute we pass this budget. Now, I get a lot of crap from, I guess, our Mr. Curry, because I talk about the past. Because it isn't the past, we don't do anything any different. It's a path, path of least resistance. We are in the same position as we were five, ten years ago. We are no different, the numbers are different, but they're the same. So, if we pass this thing, if we could say to the school committee, all right, knock off that money that you got from the state and give us an assessment that's level, then we would be all right, the minute we, we took that money, they took the money. They put us in a hole. Every time we have been broke, and we have broke every four to five years. We end up having to lay off half our people. We closed town hall. And it's not our local receipts that do it to us. It's the state government. So the panic pandemic, if the trickle-down effect doesn't hit us this year, I am really fearful that it's gonna hit us in the next two. So we're going along. Like, everything's hunky-dory and the world is great. We don't have any problems, the state told us to level fund. Were we smart enough to do that? Hell, no. No, we couldn't do that, we had, we, we, we told us to do a one-twelfth budget, we didn't do that. So no, we didn't level fund, we did a level service. Well, you know what, that could come, those decisions were made based on nothing. Absolutely nothing. And you know what, I pray to God we don't pay for it. Because all that free cash that we have can vanish in a frickin' heartbeat. So the school has hurt us year after year, Bob's right. We only can collect so much money. The new growth is gonna stop, that's like one-time money. If you talk, if you listen to Luanne last night in a roundabout way, that's pretty much what she was saying to us. All this new building is gonna come to a crashing halt. So, you know, I dread town meeting, I really do. I think that I don't wanna talk about the past, because I'm talking about the present, and if we don't get things straightened out, we're never gonna be okay.
So, so I feel like the school doesn't get the money they need. It's, it's not a question. Oh, wait, let me finish, okay, I let you talk, let me talk. Okay? The school could use a lot more money. They, they say that, to properly educate all our kids and have all the programs that all these other schools and all these other districts have, um, they could use a lot more money. So, yes, they're, they're increasing it, and it's always going to increase when you have such a large staff. Um, I, I've just,
But where, where's it gonna come from, honey? We had some industry to help us out with it.
I don't disagree with that.
The people.
I don't disagree with that.
You've got a little more than you need.
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes, go ahead.
Will Spring. Just a couple things that concern me in addition to what Mr. May has said. I noticed that three longtime school board members have dropped out. And I, I, I questioned that and say, wow, I wonder why. They must, they must see something coming here, number one. Number two is, and I, I haven't, I haven't verified this myself directly, but I heard that the town of Phillipston is planning an underwrite. And, and, and everybody know what it's on underwrite, it's, it's taking reduce the amount that, that they end up having to take in the, for taxation. If they do that, that means that this budget here is not going to take and end up passing anyway, because those people over there are upset with the fact that they closed the, the, uh, Phillipston, uh, middle school over there. I mean, they had a, an opportunity, and I, I can't, and I'm just talking about the opportunity that they took, because they're part of the regional district here. And it, this affects both towns. So let, let me continue on that. They had an opportunity to do the same thing as Peterham, Petersham and Warwick, and to take and end up having their end-up elementary school with a separate, with a separate school committee. It's, it was done, it was done just recently in Warwick. They were in a school district and they, they have a beaut, by the way, I have gone by that school a number of times, and they have a beautiful school, elementary school. And they, and they chose to take and end up pulling out of the district, as far as elementary, and, and, and have their own thing. Petersham, if you look the breakdown, Petersham has their own, uh, school board. Uh, the town of Orange, which they're in, in the district, for the high school that in the district, also has for their elementary, a separate school board, and then they have another school board, which the superintendent overlooks all of them.
Okay, great.
For the high school.
What does this have to do with the budget, Will?
Let Phillipston do that, if they wanna do that, then we'll address the town budget and the school budget on how it could be, that's not relevant.
Tony, you interrupted me. I, you, you ended up saying.
On about stuff that has nothing to do with this.
Yes, it, yes, it does.
No, it doesn't.
Because we're.
Let's stay top, excuse me.
Where in?
Excuse me. Let's stay on the budget article, please.
Yeah, we're in, we're in, with the school budget with Phillipston.
Right, and it has nothing to do with Petersham or Orange or anything else.
Let's stick with the Narragansett Regional School Budget that's presented here before, so we can keep on track.
The thing that I brought up was that they are looking at those two things, and you have school board members that are getting off.
They've been on for a number of years, they're entitled to get off.
Yeah, right, okay.
Does anyone have anything else in the Narragansett Regional School Budget article?
I make a motion to accept Article twenty-one.
A second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, can I, if I could just remind everyone that we're voting on Templeton's budget, not on the regional district budget, but on Templeton's portion of that budget. I'm just speaking for myself here, this is getting tedious, these are the same discussions we have over and over. I assumed all these discussions had been done, and we're just providing a document, this is a pre-town meeting. Are we still having a meeting after this? Because if we are, then we need to just push along.
Very minimal, couple of housekeeping.
I urge you all, please, let's just push along.
A, a couple of housekeeping things, Amy, that's all, trust me. Does anyone have anything further? If not, we've got a motion being made and seconded. Roll call vote, Will?
No.
Amy?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Deb?
Nope.
Bob?
No.
And I'm a yes. Article twenty-two. Is a non-binding question to see if the town will, uh, recommend continuing with the omnibus form budget or any other line item budget.
Let me just say this about, Mr. Chairman, Will Spring, if I can end up saying, that gives the impression that we voted for omnibus budget. That's the wrong impression, and I, and I can't end up supporting this article, whether it's non-binding or not. It gives us the fa, false impression that we voted for an omnibus budget. The, the town. And it's only the towns, the, the town meeting that can vote with, to take and go to omnibus budget, and I've been to every town meeting since it's, it's changed, and they didn't vote for it.
You can say that at town meeting.
Does anyone have anything else on Article twenty-two?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I do, um, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Bob May here. Um, Article twenty-two, non-binding question. Um, I would say, this has been asked and answered more times than I'd care to admit. If you look at the town bylaw, it came up in, uh, the fall of two thousand nineteen. And if you look at last year's, last June, the budget, the Warren article, Article seven, this section was removed. It's crossed out under Section B, it's, the part that's crossed out, it said, "It shall be the duty of the town administrator in conjunction with the board to consider expenditures and develop a budget in the ensuing fiscal year and several boards, offices and committees of the town in preparation and form detail as such perceived by the town manager." That was in June's town meeting. It was Article seven, the second part, all crossed out. Um, so I am flabbergasted as to why we're wasting our time with a non-binding resolution that's been before town hall on two different occasions. Um, and that was. Um, and that was actually appears to be anyway deleted from the bylaws uh, this past fall, this past spring.
Is Adam still on?
What's that?
That really should be directed at Adam, shouldn't it?
You, you know, I just pointed it out.
Did you forget he was on?
Yeah, I just, you know, forgot he was on, but it just is. So it's not really anything he can explain either, Tony.
Okay.
Um, but if he wants to, feel free.
This will allow the, uh, people at town meeting to vote on the budget that they feel would be appropriate moving forward for the town. And, um, this provides that opportunity.
Well, no, then you would have to go at fall town meeting and change how you do it because this is non-binding.
Yeah, and also.
Not binding, but it gives a direction on where and consensus on our information.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, Adam, but that's really only for the people that are at town meeting that day.
And, and how would you say that gives a consensus for anything when, do you think it overrides the deletion from last spring? I mean, it was, apparently it was removed last spring as a bylaw. I think that gives a lot more as to what the townspeople thought than a non-binding resolution of the same damn wording.
Just a matter of preference.
Yeah.
Does anyone have anything else on Article 22? Not an entertaining motion?
I make a motion that the advisory committee provides no, um, recommendation on this article.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Do a roll call vote. Amy?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Deb?
Yeah.
Deb? Deb?
All right, I'm gonna abstain.
Will? Will?
Uh, hang on, I'm thinking about this. I, I have, I have some issues with this and to take and make no recommendation is. I'm not sure that's the correct thing to do, so I'm gonna vote no.
And I'm a yes.
So I just wanna confirm I have, um, yeses as Amy, Tony, Bev, Bob, Tom. Will, you said no. I abstained. Is that correct, everyone?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Article 23, citizens petition.
I make a recommendation that the advisory committee does not make a recommendation on this article.
I second.
Any further discussion on that? I know that's the direction we usually, we've gone in the past also on some of the citizen petition articles that I've seen. Anyone have anything further? Roll call vote, Bev?
Uh, just, Mr. Chairman, before you have a vote, can I, can I, uh, recommend that we not only vote on this particular one to make no recommendation is all to take and end up making no recommendation, just in one vote? Done all three of the citizens petition rather than have multiple votes?
I wanna see what they are.
Okay.
As much as I'd love to, let's just do them individually. Keep it cleaner, I think, Will, on the floor because they'll all come up separately, I imagine.
All, all right. Whatever the committee wants.
So Article 23, um, we have a no vote recommendation in a second. Any further discussion? Bev?
No.
Deb?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Adam, can you scroll down so we can see the? Thank you.
Article 24 is also a citizens petition on fluoride legislation as listed below.
I make a recommendation that the advisory committee, I make a motion that the advisory committee makes no recommendation on this article.
I second that.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Amy?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Will?
I'm, I'm just laughing because I ended up saying we vote on both of them and I'll be a yes.
I thought there's one more after this, right?
No, no.
No, there isn't.
Oh, okay. I, I thought Tom said three, Will. And so I thought it was an Article 25, so my mistake or I would have said, I agree with you.
I think at least this way it keeps it cleaner for everybody. Deb?
I'm a yes.
Deb?
Nope.
Bob, do I miss you?
Um, I don't know, yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, I believe that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to end up closing the pre-town meeting and going to our regular meeting.
Second.
Okay, uh, motion being seconded. Uh, the roll call vote. Deb?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Bev?
Yeah.
Tony?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right. Just a couple of basic, uh, things. Uh, next is, uh, discuss invoice payments. Uh, Will was correct last time. I, there are two, uh, additional, uh, invoices from MMA annual meeting that I need to be, uh, paid for, uh, Will and myself. Um, entertain a motion about each one's $85. And I will be submitting these with the next, uh, payment warrant if, uh, approved.
Still moved.
That's for a total of $170, folks.
That can do the math.
Yes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call vote, Bev?
Yeah.
Amy?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Deb?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes.
Really fast now.
Roll them along.
Next up is the cemetery revolving fund request. I received a request, uh, to increase the cemetery revolving fund from $10,000 to $12,500 for FY21. Uh, the reason for the request is the cost of the mower has gone up and we'll need extra funds to purchase the $10,000 limit for FY22. Uh, we'll be going, it'll be going back to the FY22 of $10,000 limit should be fine because they don't anticipate any large expenses such as the mower anticipated at this time.
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes, go ahead.
I have a question.
Yes.
It, this, the increase was unanticipated. Is that correct, Adam?
As far as I know, that is correct. Um, from the DPW director, I'm here in his place, um, for the cost. They weren't expecting, um, that it's go over the limit.
Well, that, that sounds like if it's unexpected, it sounds like it could go to the emergency reserve.
Absolutely.
I think it could, but would, would it benefit us to still have the money in the emergency reserve where they haven't, if they haven't available in their revolving funds? To use it in their revolving funds still coming from that same, that'd still leave us the additional money if we have other emergencies that don't have the option to. We, we wouldn't, that would be $2,500 less. We have the option to do a lot if we do need to, uh, in another department's emergency.
Well, looking at the BVA and looking at we, at where we are budget wise, I don't see anything being unexpected to the amount that we have in the emergency reserve. And this, this thing actually hits on the fact that it's, 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 it's actually glaring at us and saying, use the emergency reserve fund. It's there for that. It's unanticipated.
Well, while I don't disagree with you, I think anytime there's an unanticipated cost, if a department head can find those funds within their department, they should do so. And the emergency fund should be used as a last resort. So you're right, it was an unanticipated, uh, expense. But if there's other ways to pay for it before the emergency fund, I think you should do it that way. That's just my personal opinion.
They don't have anything else on this transfer, uh, request. On that, the transfer request on the increase in the cemetery revolving fund.
I make a motion to approve the increase in the cemetery revolving fund.
I second that.
Okay, motions remain seconded. Do I have any further comments? Do a roll call?
Perhaps just to say that, increase it to the $12,500.
Yeah, Tony, would you like to put the number in there so we, into your motion so that we have the $10,000?
Okay, so I'll amend my motion to increase the cemetery revolving fund to $12,500 for fiscal year 21.
Thank you.
And the second's still fine?
All right, can I ask what cemetery revolving fund? Which, which, um, cemetery? Because some of the cemeteries, if you buy it out of Pineview, you can't use it at Green Lawn.
Where the mower is gonna be utilized is the question. I believe at the cemeteries and as far as I know, and Bob Sosik indicated to me.
I'll have to look and see. Hang on a minute.
Mr. Chairman, Bev is right to some extent.
I was gonna say, I know that was an issue before when they, uh, came to Capitol, they wanted to go that route. Um, because it didn't limit it to one cemetery over another when Allen was on. I remember that issue, but I don't know where it, how it breaks down.
Trying to find. All right, the cemetery, cemetery revolving fund request. You've got Green Lawn. I'm trying to find it.
While you're looking for that, there's a comment from Jeff Bennett. The revolving fund is different from perpetual care funds.
All right, so that goes, so you can use this, ask Jeffrey. You can use that on either, either cemetery then.
That's how I always understood it. That's why I wasn't sure what was going on.
I think that might clarify that. I appreciate that, Jeff.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second?
Same. We do, I believe. We do, we had a motion and a second, correct?
Debbie, did we have a second? Oh, Amy seconded.
Amy seconded.
Amy seconded, yes.
Does anyone have anything further? Now that Jeff's clarified that?
No. I think if we, if they didn't have money in their account and then they, they could go to the reserve fund, but apparently it's cemetery revolving, that they got all kinds of money. They've got it. It's gonna be how much money?
We're looking at $1,000 more.
Huh?
$2,500 additional.
Well, they got plenty of money in their accounts, so may as well use it.
Okay, um, nothing further. Do a roll call vote, Bev?
Yeah.
Amy?
Yes.
Bob?
Yeah.
Will?
No.
Tony?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right, moving right along. Uh, next on the agenda is resignations. I've received a resignation from Deborah Wilder. Dear Tom, upon the adjournment of the May 12th Annual Town Meeting, I'm resigning my position as advisory committee member. My participation on the advisory committee over the last three years has been a positive experience during which I learned much about municipal government. I've enjoyed working with the members of the advisory committee, select board members and the town administrator addressing the opportunity and challenges of Templeton. I would like to thank them all for their contributions and appreciate having been able to work with them during my time on the committee. Currently, events in my professional career and family life are demanding more time from my schedule. I do look forward to serving the town of Templeton again in the future when personal conditions afford the time to meet the demands of the position. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes, go ahead, Will.
I don't like to see any member get off. I understand what she's saying. But it, the, the proper pro- process is to talk about it here, but you must submit your resignation to the town clerk because she's the keeper of records and she would end up making that known to the moderator at the time.
Yes, no, absolutely. I just, I felt that was fact to, uh, read it to the board here, the committee here before I do forward them onto the, uh, town clerk.
Tom?
Yes, go ahead, Tony.
If I may, since we're talking reservations, uh, some people on the committee know that, uh, at the end of town meeting, my term is up and I will not be renewing. Uh, kind of the same reasons for Debbie. I have some personal and work commitments that just take up too much of my time right now and, uh, so I will not be, uh, staying on the advisory committee. And as my term is up, I don't believe I need to submit a resignation.
No.
That's correct.
You're absolut- you're absolutely correct, Tony. And I, 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 I'm, you're gonna be missed because I enjoy having the discussions with you to see your point of view.
Thank you, Will.
And I can always tell when you're getting tired because you get crabby.
Yes, go ahead, Bob.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say quickly while I had the chance that, uh, it's been a pleasure, uh, dealing with and interacting with both Tony and Deb. Um, I think they've both been, uh, uh, excellent members of the advisory committee. Uh, I've gotten, uh, much from both of them. And, uh, I will, uh, double down on Will's, the statement that, uh, um, Tony, uh, perspective often makes me rethink mine and I thank you for that. Um, that's never a bad thing. Um, but both of you will be missed. Deb, you've done a fantastic job, uh, with the record keeping, uh, the minutes. And I appreciate that. And, uh, for, for all of us, I think, uh, thank you both for your participation.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Bob, and the feelings are mutual.
Let, let me just put, let me just add one more, one more thing. It's, it, it, in a committee like this, it's good to take and end up having different points of view, whether we, we agree with each other or not. To take and end up having that, that happen is it, the importance of this committee. It has to happen at this committee. It doesn't happen at the select board and it should at times. But it's imperative that this board end up having that discussion and whether we agree on, on any particular thing or not, it's, 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 it basically, that's what, that's what advisory committees and finance committees do, people.
It's our job.
Thank you. I just, I just wanna say thank you very much. I, it's late. I don't wanna get into it, but too late, but, um, I really appreciate having gotten to know everybody that I've gotten to meet by participating on the advisory committee. And like I said, when, when things aren't so crazy and hectic and house and work, I'll definitely be back. But now I, you know, it's just the appropriate thing to do at this time.
Yeah, I think you aren't supposed to watch them.
No, not right now.
Do I have a, another letter of resignation, which is from myself? Uh, effective upon the adjournment of the May 12th Annual Town Meeting, I will be officially resigning as chairman and member of the Templeton Advisory Committee. Throughout my short time on the advisory committee, it's been a privilege to work with the various members and other committees in an attempt to improve Templeton. Currently, in my professional career, my schedule has become extremely hectic due to various reasons. Unfortunately, my full focus must remain in this area. I look forward in the future to working with many of you on various boards and committees. Currently, Templeton is a very talented town administrator and knowledgeable department heads. Hopefully, as all committee members and departments strive to make Templeton better in all aspects, people will realize that it's okay to work together. Dwelling on past mistakes or administrations does not create a better town, but it does create a bitter town. Thank you.
Yeah. And you take that path of least resistance and wash it away and then we'll be all set.
Well, I'm, I'll, I'll say this. I'm sorry to take and see all, all three ago because it's, 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 like I said, it's important for advisory and finance committees to take and end up viewing their air. Their, their, uh, as far as their, their thoughts are, is, and moving forward and to take and end up coming back again and end up having meetings. They may be too long at times, but it's good to air out different. coming back again and end up having meetings. They may be too long at times, but it's good to air out different views or, or, and opinions so that we can help the town out.
I can. Might, I'd just like to add quickly, Tom, you'll be missed. Uh, sorry to hear that, but uh, circumstances do change. Um, while we have this moment, I just wanna say to anybody out there, you just heard, there's three openings on the advisory committee come May twelfth. So please, if you're interested, if you wanna participate in your town government, if you wanna make change, if you just want your voice to be heard, this is the time to sign up and uh, see if you can get the moderator to uh, appoint you to the board.
I'll add that it was um, an amazing experience that helped me learn a lot about town government and how it works. So if you have the time and something of interest and you wanna learn more, this has been a really good way of, of learning the process and how everything fits together and how it works, so.
I would agree with that.
Mr. Chair? Yes, go ahead. Well, it's hard, I mean, it, very saddened to see uh, three of the advisory committee members uh, that um, coming back. I, I, Deb, Tom, Tony, um, I've known you all for at least a good amount of the time I've been here and I've learned a lot from all of you. You all have your uh, particular strengths. You all contribute so much time. Um, I know the advisory committee uh, certainly had a lot of meetings. Um, and I think you've done a great job. All, all my experience, I mean, I, I've made uh, great friends with uh, you folks and I think um, I wish you the best in your future, you know, stay in touch. Um, I'm just really I don't know how it's gonna be without you three.
You'll be fine.
Thanks, Adam.
Thanks, Adam.
Um, I do also wanna recognize Jeff Bennett has um, individually written a note saying thank you to myself, Tony and to Tom for volunteering and for our service. So thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay, uh, next on the uh, agenda is uh, any uh, committee member comments. Uh, start with you, Bev. Have you got anything?
Well, I think that um, the only way that things will stay on an even keel is if we learn from our mistakes. And if we work on the things in the DSL report that need to be fixed. Because the past is not gonna go away and you can't ignore it when it's on your shoulder. And that will affect the town if the select board can get, get to business and fix the things that need to be fixed, that they need to fix, and the advisory board can do their job, it'll make things a lot better. I think that we have a good crew and we will have a good crew. I've gone through, I've been on three, at least three advisory boards and lots of different people with lots of different, different areas. And it's, it's a learning experience. It's not a bad one, it's a good one. So I think this was a good meeting. Okay, that's it.
Okay, uh, Amy?
No, I don't have anything to add tonight. I've been on Zoom since five. I had the regional agreement committee before this one that I had to dive out of, so I have to watch the recording to update you guys.
Okay.
Thanks, Amy.
Okay, uh, Tony?
Nope. Good, thank you.
Okay, Bob?
Yeah, I've said enough.
No kidding. Oh, I'm sorry, Bob.
Yeah, six feet, Tony, six feet, buddy.
Uh, Will?
Yes, if I could, I'd, I'd just like to take and end up having Debbie copy me.
I don't hear you. Talking to your mic.
Off. Uh, I'd like to, to, to just uh, uh, have Debbie get copy me on uh, when she writes up the recommendations for the, the warrant. Uh, I, I will attempt to put those on our website because I see it was done last year. I've, I've, I'm still learning a few things. It's, it's quite complicated. The other thing is that I wanna take and end up talking to the town administrator. I got a big surprise in watching the uh, the selectmen's meeting from him and Mr. Curry on my recommendation for them to go out and look at uh, the ARPA and how the uh, department heads go because that to me is gonna be the key or one of the keys to help out this community in the future to get part of the one point nine million dollars that the federal government has put out there. I sat through a webinizer, uh, as uh, Adam is aware. And it's, 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 folks, it's a totally amazing how much money is there and what it's for. It goes for water, sewage, uh, the, the broadband, uh, vehicles for fire, uh, roads, et cetera. It's just amazing and I, 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 I can't even remember everything. And it, to have the department heads submit that and whether we get it, we'll, we'll, we might get some of that money. And that, that will help us out, especially if we can end up taking care of some of our, some of our infra- infrastructure. And also part of the, the uh, it's, it's, overall, it's gonna end up helping. And I, and I thank Adam for uh, uh, not, not getting up too upset with me. And I was surprised that him and Mr. Curry made mention uh, uh, that I ended up sending an email. Thank you.
All right.
Deb, do you?
I have no additional comment. Thank you.
Okay, and uh, my only comment is, I know last uh, meeting we discussed that we wouldn't be holding our, possibly not holding our first meeting of the month because we had just had this one this week and would be following up with the town meeting after our recommendations. Um, just looking for input on uh, as far as opinions on that?
Not have the meeting next week.
Any uh, I'll certainly second that. I don't know if anyone else has opinions on that?
I'm fine with that. Let's not cancel the May sixth meeting.
Any other, have any other inputs? I don't know if we really need to vote on it or we can, we can just make it. Think, Bev, your opinion? Amy?
No, I don't know what we would meet on if this is done and then we have to wait for town meeting anyway.
So you're a yes on canceling the meeting?
Come on, we could just go around on this again.
Yes.
Oh, no, no, no.
No.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Will?
Uh, I, yeah, I, I'll miss you guys next week if we don't have a meeting. I get to, I get to see you, uh, see, see you all and you, you probably all don't understand that I have a computer, but I don't have one of those fancy cameras that you all have on yours.
Oh, Santa Claus, maybe we'll bring you one.
You know, you can buy one at Staples for like twenty bucks. It's just a USB right into your, your uh,
You gotta understand on how to, to use some of the technology.
All right.
Well, if I can do it, God only knows.
Deb, you're a
Me, oh yeah, I'm good, yep.
Okay, I'm good too. Um, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded? Think everyone's a yes at this point?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay, we won't even do a roll call on that one.
No, I vote no.
Good luck, stay well.